Would someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second. Mrs. Van Seis, all in favor? Stane, motion carries unanimously. I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order, all board members are present except Dr. Venator. I'd like to ask Mrs. Vasquez to lead us in recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public religious standard, one nation, undivided, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency and evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note that all marked "emergency" exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, I request that everyone please silence their cellphones and other electronic devices. Would someone like to make a motion to add an addendum to item 15, Special Needs and Student Services, reorder the agenda and place item 8D, Enrollment Projections and Impact to the Open Enrollment, and 8E, Approved Resolution Determining Open Enrollment Schools after the approval of the amendments, and approve the agenda as amended? Mr. Mecca, second. Speaker, any discussion? All in favor? Abstentions or opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Dr. Marslov, will you introduce the President of the PTSA Council, please?
Sure. Before we get to the President of the PTSA Council, I'd like to acknowledge some individuals who are joining us this evening. Back in 2007, New York State established School-Related Professionals Recognition Day to acknowledge the important work of non-teaching staff members who are valued partners in education on both the front lines and behind the scenes. School-Related Professionals Recognition Day is always the third Tuesday in November, which is November 21st this year, so even though we are a week early, we want to publicly recognize all of the women and men who work to keep our schools clean and in good repair, who provide transportation and nutritious meals to our students, who ensure that our school offices and classrooms run smoothly, who keep us all connected through technology, and who look after the health and welfare of our students day in and day out. With us tonight, representing some of our school-related professionals, are the leaders and co-presidents of the Computer Support Technicians Association, Cheryl Wood and Linda Shelton. We thank all the school-related professionals for their countless contributions to our students and the vital role they play in making Williamsville schools the best of the best. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ronald Schubert, who is a former Williamsville Board of Education member for 17 years and is currently the President of the District PTSA Council. Mr. Schubert, please come to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Marslov. Joining me also tonight is Jen Melissay, our co-Vice President. Want to come up, Jen? As part of School Board Recognition -- oh my gosh, let me start over again. As part of School Board Recognition Week, Council recognizes and values the tremendous amount of volunteer time that the members of the Williamsville Board of Education commit to maintaining the Williamsville Central School District's reputation for putting kids first and its emphasis on excellence in education. On behalf of Council, it is my privilege to introduce and honor each member of the Board, and Jen will present a gift of appreciation. First, this year's President is Mr. Sean Lemay. Mr. Lemay joined the Board in 2015. He served as the Vice President, actually while I was President, from 2015 to 2016. He's married to Kristen and has two daughters. Jessica Parker graduated from Williamsville South and now works at Maple West Elementary School as a social worker, and Madeline attends Williamsville South. He is the President and CEO of Sound and Theater, S&amp;T Enterprises of Western New York. He enjoys spending time with family, traveling, biking, camping, boating, theater, and sports.[372.18][372.18][applause] This year's Vice President is Mrs. Teresa Ann Leatherbarrow. Mrs. Leatherbarrow joined the Board in 2016. She and her husband Jack have three children attending Williamsville schools. Serena and Samuel attend North, and Maggie attends High Middle. She is an elementary school teacher in the Buffalo Public Schools. She plays the piano and enjoys seeing local artists perform. She also enjoys outdoor activities such as bike rides, evening walks, gardening, and This year's Parliamentarian is Mrs. Mary Beager. Mrs. Beager was elected in 2016. She and her husband Timothy have three children. Aiden attends High Middle, Austin attends High Elementary, and Ashton is a preschooler. Mrs. Beager was an elementary school teacher and is now an instructional support specialist for Kenton Schools. She is also a roly-poly's music teacher, you'll have to explain that. She plays the piano and enjoys spending time with family, camping, hiking, reading, playing, as well as watching her older boys play hockey and baseball.[462.86][462.86][applause] Past President, Mrs. Tony Vasquez, has the most history on the Board, having been elected in 2012 and re-elected in 2015. She's married to Dr. Raul Vasquez, and they have four children. Raul III graduated from Amherst High School, Nina and Nadia graduated from East High School, and Saul attends Transit Middle. She is the Chief Financial Officer for the Greater Buffalo United Accountable Healthcare Network and the owner, practice administrator of Urban Family Practice PC. She enjoys reading and also plays the piano. I think that's two now for piano.
Three.
Three, that's right. Former Vice President, Mr. Mark Mecca, was elected in 2015. He and his wife Stephanie have a preschooler, Emily. He's a school psychologist in the Buffalo Public Schools and serves on the Buffalo Teachers' Federation Executive Committee. He's a former English teacher in Toyo -- how do you put it? Toyoshima, Japan? Okay. His interests include technology, computers, AV equipment, and golf. No piano?
No piano.
And Mrs. Suzanne Van Seis was elected in 2016. She and her husband Maurice have two children. Leanna attends North High School, and Logan attends Casey Middle. She's a special education teacher for Lockport City Schools. She enjoys being involved in all aspects of education to gain further knowledge and provide support and guidance to others.[586.89][586.89][applause] Dr. Susan McClary was elected in 2017. She has a grandson attending Williamsville schools. She is a retired Sweet Home Central Schools teacher and Teacher Center Director. She was an Assistant Professor at Damon College and served as the Director of Canadian Scholars Program. Recently, she has served as the Assistant to Amber Supervisor and former Williamsville School Board President, Dr. Barry Weinstein.[620.16][620.16][applause] Mr. Philip S. Meyer was elected in 2017. He and his wife Cecile have a preschooler, Sophia. Mr. Meyer practices law at his law firm, Meyer Law Firm. He also serves as the Town of Amherst Deputy Town Attorney and Prosecutor and is an adjunct business professor at Bryan and Stratton College. He enjoys sailing, kayaking, and traveling.[657.19][657.19][applause] Although we could not be here this evening, we also want to recognize Dr. Kurt Venator, who was elected to the Board in 2017. He and his wife Kristen Campbell have three children. Kay Parker attends East High School, Camden attends Transit Middle, and Knox attends Maple East. He is Chief Veterinary Officer of Nestle Arena. He enjoys sailing, fishing, cooking, and hiking.
Thank you. Are there any board acknowledgements this evening? I'd like to welcome Dr. McKenna to the table tonight for your first board meeting.[713.01][713.01][applause] Mrs. Beager, would you please read the Board's public expression statement?
Sure, thanks. Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the Board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the Board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you can conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. I would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us your ideas, sharing your opinions, but not engaging in personal attack. Thank you for your cooperation. Our first speaker this evening is Peter Campo.
Hi, I'm Peter Campo. I'm a sophomore at Williamsville East. A couple months ago, my classmates and I were upset about the decision to end class rank for all upcoming grades of high school, not because we were opposed to it, but because it didn't include us. Seeing how upset people were about this decision, I organized a petition to end class rank for 10th and 11th grade. The signatures almost entirely came from students at Williamsville East from all four grades, but also included a few parents of these students and staff, as well as former school board member, Dr. Devkin. We had 405 signatures overall, which included a majority of 57% of Williamsville East's sophomore grade. We only had about a third of the junior year because we only had two sophomores collecting signatures, but we got so few noes in the end that I think they would agree too. If this is representative of the other schools in the district, class rank should be abolished for the 10th and 11th grade. If class rank was only abolished so far as freshman year because 10th and 11th graders were too invested in it already, as it is to my understanding, then I would think that Williamsville East would be the most resistant to end class rank, as it is widely considered to be the most competitive school of the three. So North and South High Schools would likely support it even more than East already does. I'm not going to give the arguments for and against class rank, because I'm sure you've heard them all before, being that the previous decision with it was so recent. I just hope that you make the right decision. I ask you again to expand the abolition of class rank to include 10th and 11th grade throughout the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to present this petition.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker this evening is Carolyn Gorsinski.
I've worn many hats in this district. Tonight, I am speaking as a parent and a member of the concerned parents of Williamsville. My son Jacob is a second-grade student. He attends the District's 15-1 program at Dodge Elementary. Jacob has attended the District's 15-1 program since kindergarten. From the moment Jacob set foot in the District's programming, my husband and I have been fighting for him. Even though it is my career to advocate for the legal rights of parents and students, I myself have had to hire an educational advocate and an attorney to support and advise my family. My husband and I have spent countless hours researching and arranging supports and services for Jacob on a private basis to promote his progress and to assist in maintaining him in an academic program that allows for his continued growth. Because of our hard work, Jacob has made amazing progress. He has made progress that individuals within this district never believed he could make. And that is the point of my presentation tonight. Just as much as my husband and I have fought for our son's amazing progress, believing in his ability to achieve and develop, we have struggled against the District's persistent resistance to our efforts on behalf of our son and our strong belief in the capabilities of our son. Instead of focusing on, or in some instance, not even recognizing, all of Jacob's many great achievements, the District's focus is always on what he cannot do and what he does not do well. I cannot tell you how disheartening this is for my husband and I, especially because we know how hard Jacob has worked to make these achievements. Like others who have spoken out about their treatment within this district, we have been told no to simple accommodations and supports that have proven to be beneficial to our son. We have had high-level District officials make predetermined decisions about our son's programming and services, completely and unlawfully excluding us from those decisions. And we have been lied to about our rights. I am uniquely equipped to identify these actions as wrong and to address them, but this should not be happening. It is wrong. In closing, I have been informed that the District's 15-1 self-contained program will not be available to Jacob and his classmates next year. This is distressing to my husband and I, and for many other families in the District who have children who require this program. We have been given inconsistent reasons for this decision to discontinue a continuum of special education services for children in the District past the second grade who need this programming. There is no middle ground for our children. The floor has been pulled from underneath them. Again, this is wrong and it should not be happening. I invite the Board to meet with our group, to understand our concerns. Many of us have met with District Administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And that was our last speaker this evening.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and the addendums as presented, please? Mrs. Vasquez, second. Mr. Mecca, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on October 17, 2017, please? Mrs. Van Seis, is there a second? Dr. McClary, any corrections or additions to the minutes? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 701, excuse me, 601. Dr. Marslov, would you like to introduce the report on enrollment projections, please?
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Each November, we complete and present a Board Report on Enrollment for our projections for the next five years. And with us this evening is our consultant, who we have hired for a number of years for this task, Dr. Stephen Grossman. And I welcome him to Western New York and invite him to begin his presentation this evening. Dr. Grossman?
Thank you very much. I just want to say hello to so many new Board members elected, congratulations, in the last couple of years. Last year, if you were here, you saw me on the TV screen. This year, I'm here. The weather is terrific tonight, and there's no problem driving in. So I'll just get on with the report, because I know you have a busy night ahead. Can everybody hear me all right? So each year, I do the report, and this year, nothing significant was changed in the way that we did the report. We look at considerations of kindergarten class size, of course, that's our foundation, the current enrollments, in or out migration, which is a term that we use for students moving in and out of the District during the year. There'll always be some churning. Sometimes there'll be a net zero change, sometimes it'll be negative, sometimes it'll be positive. The number in private and parochial schools is a consideration. Sometimes private schools close, and that can have an impact on enrollments. Sometimes they, for instance, charter school opens, and that can have an impact. The number in homeschooling, number in out-of-district programs, number of incarcerated students, number in charter schools, high school leavers or dropouts, and the economy, meaning, you know, if a new business that has 300 employees is about to open, it's likely that that'll have a significant impact on enrollments as the employees move into the District. We've found over the years that, and we look every year at all the different factors, but we found that changes in kindergarten size, the current enrollments, who's enrolled right now, and students moving in and out, that we determined by, just by the numbers, we don't know who they are, I don't, you know who they are, I don't know who they are. It's just a matter of a class, the first grade is larger than the kindergarten, and so you know somehow the kids had to move into the school. And then the economy, whether or not there's anything happening to indicate that enrollments would go up because of employment. So tonight, we'll talk about, as we have in the past, the kindergarten through grade 12 enrollments, past, present, and future, the elementary schools, we'll break it out by school, the middle schools, the high schools, and then a couple of conclusions. So we start with the discussion of the live births. In my report, you'll note that the projected enrollments to the right of that arrow appear based on the live birth data for the District. And what's nice is that the State Education Department and Bureau of Vital Statistics over the past, since 2002, have broken out the live births by District, which is tremendous if you're doing this kind of work, because you don't have to extrapolate from the county to the school district. And so it tends to be very accurate. What also has happened in this District, which isn't always the case, is that there's a correlation clearly between the kindergarten enrollments and the live births five years prior. Again, they're not the same individuals necessarily, some aren't, some aren't, but there's clearly a correlation. So we anticipate that over the next three years, the kindergarten enrollments should increase. It's not a really sharp increase, but an increase. And then you can see the current enrollments are clearly still loaded toward the upper grades. Not as much as they were a few years ago, but still, we're still looking at 800s in the 7th through 12, and sevens and high sixes in the K through 6. So I was asked to look at the impact of open enrollments, and it's, I got the data from the District, which I do every year, and frankly, it's not as significant as one might expect it would be. Apparently, people send their children to the school in the area they're in, and they're not that anxious to transfer them out. So the elementaries, very small numbers, transfer in. High schools, given the size of these schools, these are not particularly high numbers, fairly insignificant when you spread it out over all the grade levels. So when we get all the data and we look at it, then we make some assumptions, and as in the past, our assumptions were that kindergartens will be smaller than 12th grades. Inmigration will offset the attrition because of the way the numbers have come out. The economy will continue its recovery, slow as it is, but it doesn't appear that we'll have a downturn that would cause people to be migrating out. And other factors will stay stable. All those other things that we talked about, charter schools, et cetera, are going to be a constant, so there won't be an impact on enrollments as they currently exist in the District. Okay. So we have a five-year history, and the five-year history shows a decrease of 305 students, which is, you know, a small number against 10,000 students in the District, but still a significant number over the K-12, 13 grades. We're looking at a projection of a decrease from now until 10 years from now of about 476. But you'll notice something we haven't seen before since I've been doing this. At the end of that period, the enrollment's starting to go up. Now, I say "starting" because it's really well within the margin of error for students, but it's the first time we've seen where we say that's the end of the decreasing enrollments, and we're probably going to be looking at stabilizing and maybe increasing, who knows? The elementary school history, if we just take the elementary schools now, then we would see a 202-student decrease on a 3,600-student base over the past five years, projected to now increase. So what's happening is the small classes coming into the elementary schools are not getting any smaller. So they seem to be stabilizing, and in fact, we're looking at a projection of an increase, again, well within the margin of error, but still an increase. So Country Parkway, we currently have 520. The difference between next year and five years from next year would be an increase of 88 students. Dodge, we have 503. We're looking at having 577 in 2022, 23. So from next year to 2022, we're looking at an increase of 22 students. None of these increases are worrying, but they are increases rather than decreases, so we're seeing a difference in some of the patterns that we've seen before. Forest, we're looking at an increase from next year, from 546 to 569, 23 student increase. In High, we currently have 604. Next year, we're projected to go down a little bit and then slowly increase over five years, 42 students. Maple East, the numbers came out that there'd be, from 610, we'd be at 603, with a slight increase next year, and so from 2018 to 2022, we're looking at 33 student decrease. And again, finally, in Maple West, we're looking at a decrease, a small decrease, from 2018 to 2022 of 56 students, but still maintaining at about 580 students. So what I take away from this is-- So what you, what I, what I take away from this is it's not going to change, and if it does, it won't be very much over the next five years. Because, you know, you get anomalies, you get a big kindergarten class, that'll change this from a 56 student decrease to a, a 40 student increase if you had a particularly big class, you know, a couple of them come in. But I don't see anything that would indicate a big change in the, in the enrollments. If we look at the middle school, five-year history, we had larger classes in the middle schools for, for a long, for a number of years. They're, they're moving out, we're seeing a 142 student decrease, or we saw 142 student decrease the past five years. Next five years, we're looking at a larger decrease because of the larger classes moving out and the smaller classes moving in. For Casey, we're looking at a current enrollment of 675. Next year, we're projecting 637, and then five years, 671, for an increase of 34. Heim, we're looking at a current enrollment of 647. Next year, like a fairly insignificant increase to 681, but then the way the projections roll out, given the classes moving in are smaller, we're looking at a decrease over five years of 112 students to 569. Mill, we currently have 841. We're looking at, again, almost exactly the same next year, but then a 30 student decrease is projected five years from now, from then. And Transit, we're looking at almost 1,000 students. They're looking at 2018, 19, pretty much the same, and then as we move forward, five years, maybe around 100, 107 student decrease. So that's the middle school. So there's larger classes moving in, I mean, moving out, smaller classes moving in. The high school, they're going to be receiving those larger classes. So in the past five years, we've actually seen an increase in the high school enrollments, all three. But over the next five years, we'll likely see a decrease of 171 students, or 170 odd students. So, oops, so for East High School, we're going from 1,009 this year to 1,011 next year, and then seeing a very small decrease projected for East over the five years, almost insignificant, 17 students. North, we're looking at currently 1384. We've been projecting that they're going to hit a high point where they are, and then it's going to decrease, and that's a 75 stu, a 45 student decrease, I don't know why that's left off that slide. So it's, again, highly, it's not highly insignificant, but it's insignificant in terms of statistics. And then finally, South, we have a 975 students now, 950 next year, and then a projected decrease over five years of around 109 students. So there, those high schools will start to see the smaller groups moving in as time goes on. So, conclusions. Next five years, a slow decrease in the K-12 enrollments will continue with a leveling out in the elementary grades, which we've already seen. I don't see any reason to change attendance areas or feeder patterns, given that the schools are holding nicely in terms of sort of an optimum proportion of the different, of the students in the attendance areas. I don't see a need for any major changes in facilities, open schools, closed schools, build schools. And the open enrollments, I don't, I don't, I don't see any reason to change it for the purposes of balancing enrollments, or because one's school's overcrowded, or whatever. There's not, there's not a big, there's hardly any effect in terms of the population of the schools. And with that, I'm open to questions. Thank you. Did that go to job? I appreciate, again, as every year, that we've been doing this and partnering on this, the opportunity to come and, and do this, this report. I feel like the weatherman, you know, I kind of take responsibility for the numbers, even though I have nothing to do with it. The numbers, the numbers are the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the resolution determining open enrollment schools as presented? Mrs. Beeger, second? Mrs. Van Seis, any discussion? Yes, Dr. McClary?
Repeat the open enrollment schools, please.
Dr. Marslov, could you please fill us in with what schools are open and rolling?
The Forest Elementary, Dodge Elementary, Casey Middle School, Heim Middle School, North High School, East High School, South High School.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Vasquez, Mr. Meyer, and I attended the Wall of Fame Breakfast on October the 27th as the Board Liaison to the Education Foundation. Mr. Meyer, would you please comment and give us an update on the event?
Sure, absolutely. Education Foundation does this, I believe, once every two ye, excuse me, once every two years. I thought they did a phenomenal job coordinating everything. I think the keynote speaker in the back of a lot of people's minds was Ms. Shukas, who coordinates everything for SNL, but I was really impressed with all of the speakers. I think the common thread amongst all of them was that they referred back to all the people who helped them get to where they were. So none of their speeches were really about them, they were about other people. So I took that away with me from, from that breakfast, and I was really impressed with the extraordinary talent that we've produced throughout the years from all of our schools. So it was an excellent event, and I encourage other board members to go to, in the future. If anyone else has anything to add, please do.
Thank you. Dr. McClary and I attended the Erie County Association of School Boards Legislative Forum on October the 26th and submitted reports for this event. Does anyone have any questions about that forum? Speed boarding dessert forum will be November the 16th. Dr. McClary and myself plan on attending this event. Does anyone else have anything else to report from the Erie County Association of School Boards? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the membership for the New York State School Board Association and authorize the payment of dues in the amount of $12,504, please? Mrs. Van Seis, a second? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Coming up this Saturday, November the 18th, from 9:00 AM till noon at East High School, is the Board's first community forum. This is the opportunity for the community, the staff, the students, to come out and have a discussion with the Board on a group or one-on-one discussion. Unlike coming to public expression here at the podium, where you, you speak to the Board, the Board listens and hears your concerns, here at the community forum, we'll actually be able to have a conversation, a two-way dialect with you, and discuss matters that the community brings to our attention. Could be positive, could be negative, could be on just about any subject school-related. So we encourage everybody to please come out in attendance to the first one, again, this Saturday, 9:00 AM till noon, East High School in the Commons. We had a lot of board visitations this past month. October the 19th, at the AIM, we had Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Dr. McClary, and I. On November 2nd, we had Maple West, again, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Dr. McClary, and I also visited on that one. And this past Monday, yesterday, actually, we were at South High School. Mrs. Le, excuse me, actually, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, sorry, you weren't there. Mrs. Beeger, Dr. McClary, and I, again, visited that at South. The next school visitation will be Tuesday, December the 5th, at 8:00 AM, Transit Middle School. I've got down Mrs. Vasquez, Dr. McClary, and I are all planning on attending that. If anyone else becomes available, please let myself and/or Mrs. Seraphin know. Dr. Marslov, would you like to give us your community update, please?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to address some of the questions that have arisen at the last board meeting and again this evening in regards to our special education program. Myself, along with our Board President, Mr. Lumay, has reached out to those parents in writing that spoke at the last board meeting and invited them to come in and speak with District Administration, either individually, which is the normal course of action, or even as a group, which is unusual, given confidentiality concerns when it comes to student manners. We've also called and emailed and made a number of overtures to try to encourage those parents to come in and talk about whatever their specific issues may be, and we will continue to make those efforts going forward with the parent that spoke this evening. I also want to address class rank. I recently sent out a WITZ mail to all middle school and high school parents, and in that WITZ mail, I explained the Board and the district's process for making a decision and holding a vote to eliminate class rank for all students, beginning with this year's current freshman at all of our high schools. However, during the course of sending this WITZ mail, a number of parents replied all. And if you consider that thousands of emails went out and a reply all caused thousands more WITZ mails to be returned, you can understand how that could lead to some frustration. So we have made the necessary adjustments to our system so that that will not happen again. We're not looking to commute, to create rather a community forum online, but rather an opportunity, as we always do, for anyone to ask appropriate questions. I am looking forward to the community forum this coming Saturday and having a conversation with all of our parents and community members who are able to attend. And lastly, to echo Mr. Meyer's comments, we had a wonderful Wall of Fame induction ceremony that took place at Park Country Club, and it really was wonderful to hear all of the inductees, really truly impressive people. We had 12 inductees who have graduated from Williamsville Schools, and all of them did talk about the help they've had along the way, because no one gets to where they're going, students, if you don't have some assistance along the way, some support, some people to lean on, some great teachers and educators who work to inspire you each and every day. All of those things, your parents, that make a difference in your life in leading you to success down the road. So that was certainly inspiring to hear. And then I also want to say thank you to our Director of Communications, Rita Wolf, for all of her tremendous work as it came to the Wall of Fame induction ceremony. She and her department do a tremendous amount when it comes to all of the publication and communication of the event and communication with the Wall of Fame inductees. So thank you, Mrs. Wolf. So that is all I have on the community update. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would someone like to move to take the motion to delete policy 1340 from the table for a second reading and adoption? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second? Mrs. Beeger, any discussion?
Just for clarification, this is to remove the policy?
Correct. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to move the second reading and adoption of the motion to delete policy? Nope, sorry, that's a duplicate in the script, sorry. Would someone like to move the first reading to revise the following policies? 5640, smoking, tobacco use; 7320, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances; 7520, accidents and medical emergencies; 7670, due process complaints, selection of board appointment of impartial hearing officers. So somebody make the motion, please? Okay, Mrs. Van Seis, is there a second? McClary, thank you. Any discussion? Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
This is just mainly for clarification, but the policies regarding smoking, tobacco use, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances, the way I'm reading this, these policies basically just lay out what's prohibited, but am I understanding then that it's the code of conduct that deals with the consequences for those actions and not the actual policies?
Correct. The main thrust of the change for this particular policy was the addition of information on e-cigarettes being illegal, and that's New York state law, and of course, our policy needs to be updated to follow it as such.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Oh, excuse me, I think we're going to table this. Yes, this was a first reading, my apologies. Would someone like to move to table this motion for a second reading and adoption at the December 22nd, 2017 regular board meeting, please? Mrs. Beeger, second? Mrs. Van Seis, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. We'll bring that back up next month. Someone like to move the second reading adoption of the motion to delete policy 1340 from the district policy manual? We brought it back from being tabled, now we're actually voting on removing it.
Yes, yeah.
No, we brought it back from being tabled.
Oh, gotcha.
I had to reread that. Anyone? Okay, Mrs. Van Seis, a second, please? Mr. Meyer, thank you. Any discussion? Now we're voting on it. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Thank you, and apologies. Dr. Marslov has given his Board his draft goals for the 2017-2018 school year. Would anyone like to comment or have any questions regarding this? Okay, no questions, moving on. Dr. Marslov, would you like to start the 2018-19 budget development presentation, please?
Thank you again, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Maturski, who's going to present some information on the financial analysis of the 2016-17 audit and the review of historical budget reductions. So, Mr. Maturski?
Thank you, Dr. Marslov. The information provided tonight is the first piece of supportive data that you will be receiving for the development of our 1819 budget, as Dr. Marslov just said. Last meeting, our auditors, Drushin, Malecki, provided information on the audit, and I'm just going to take that a little bit further and review a few of the highlights and how it pertains to what we will be doing in the next few months as we go through our 1819 budget development process. Although the audit does concentrate on the six funds I've listed on this particular slide, the one that we will be focusing on is the general fund, and we'll be reviewing just a few of the major items, the revenue expenditures, the balance sheet, and the change in fund balance. Looking at this from a perspective of where we have been over the last four years, and it also will kind of provide us an indication of where we're going, what you can see is that our total revenue has remained relatively stable. The increases in that area really are attributed to two areas, certainly our tax levy increase that we had, which was about 1.3 million in that 1617 budget, as well as our state aid. And if you remember, there was a larger increase in state aid due to the fact that we had the GEA reduction. So in the current year budget, 1718, we actually had $145,000 decrease in state aid. So that's attributed to why it went up, what is a significant amount. And on the expenditure side, again, really, the area that we would like to see the increases in would be our instructional program. So you see, it was about $2.2 million. And then, again, debt pay down, which assists us for the future for both project, capital project-wise, as well as putting our, our budget in place for the future. So looking at the significant expense items, again, in this area, it's, it's really where you want to see our budget want to see our budget expended. On the instructional end, 78.5% of our budget was expended in that area, support services, only 13.4% and about 6.3% in our pupil transportation area. Support services also includes the most, the greatest amount of funds is for our facilities. So that includes all of our utility expense. Looking at how our balance sheet is, again, similarly put on a perspective of the last four years, you can see that it's relatively stable. There are a few increases and then a decrease that you see in total assets is the result of the fact we moved dollars that we had saved for our 2015 capital projects. So those dollars that were in our savings account, in our capital reserves, were transferred to those programs, and that was the result why we had a reduction in our total assets from about 85 million to 81 million. On the liability side, essentially, we remain stable, which is good. We have not had any major increases or decreases. The last time we had a major change was due to the increase in the retirement system liabilities, and those have been relatively stable over the last few years. The next item I wanted just to review very briefly is a definition of our fund balance and our reserves. Again, our auditors mentioned these last meeting, but I wanted just to provide some information and then show you exactly how those reserves changed. First of all, assigned reserves are, or restricted reserves are those that I have listed here. I'm not going to go through each of those items, but you can see they're for very specific purposes, and they can't be used for general use. They can only be used to, for expenses attributed to the areas that are defined. So one thing I do want to point out is our largest reserve is in capital, building and school bus transportation purchases. Those items can only be expended when the community approves them, and we do that when we have new propositions, and we include that in the proposition language so that the community is physically approving the expenditure of those dollars. Other reserves, we have assigned reserves, and there's really two major items that we use in our district. One is appropriated fund balance, and you'll see this amount in our revenue section when we begin developing the new budget. So we'll have a reserve or an allocation of appropriated fund balance there. In the past, it's been stable at about $5.4 million, and we would look to continuing to keep that same amount as we move forward in the 1819 budget. And encumbrances is something that really is there at the end of the school year. Essentially, it's items that we have issued purchase orders for, and we have not received the invoices to pay. So as a result, those are carried over and called encumbrances, and those do fluctuate to a certain degree between year to year, but for the most part, they're relatively stable. Unassigned fund balance is what we commonly refer to as that 4% limit that's assigned by New York State, and so we are at the 4% limit per, as you heard from our auditors in our last meeting. So I know this is very small on the screen, you have more information certainly in the packet. I'm not going to go through the individual numbers, but what I want to just share are the totals at the bottom, and it really will show you, and again, it ties back to the audit in the reference section, as well as what you've already seen in the total assets and the balance sheet. So again, when we began the fiscal year, which would have been really the end of the last one, we had about $70.4 million in reserves and fund balance, and as you see, we had 11.3 million almost moving out of those, and the major amount of that, if you go up midway in that chart on the second column, you'll see it was $6,125,816 that were transferred from our capital reserves to our capital projects. So essentially, that's the dollars we did not need to borrow, and that saved us, as you'll see later in this presentation, a significant amount of money. We have to by law post interest expense to those reserves, and that's where you see the $26,000 at the bottom. And then we were able to put some dollars back into those reserves at the end of the year, not as much as we took out this year, but $7.5 million went back into them, resulting in the current balance, which you saw again in our balance sheet, $66,687,221. And again, the decrease is about $3.7 million. So as we look forward in the development cycle, you know, the positive impact that we have is that we, as I said, we, assets decreased by 3.9 million, but I mentioned the positive impact of paying down debt. That really will save the district over that 15-year term if we had to borrow money, about $1.6 million in interest savings. So as we continue to be able to do that, it has a major benefit to us in the future, and it also impacts how much we can actually take on in future capital projects. Positive impact, our total liabilities again remain stable with minimal increases, and that really, again, as I also mentioned, our TRS, teacher retirement system, and employee retirement system amounts have been relatively stable over the last few years. Looking forward, we've got some positive impact from having a stable financial condition when we look at developing our next budget. That's going to have to be looked at again, but we're in a good position. Negatively, I think that we all know that at this point in time, we're looking at only two major areas where we can increase our revenues, being the tax levy and state aid. And as again, you know, we had no state aid increase in this fiscal year, and based upon the fact that the current information being received from New York State is that the state is at a $4.4 billion deficit projected for next year, that will definitely impact how much state aid we will receive. Again, rising expenses, it's important that we have the offset on the revenue so that we don't have to make budget reductions, and those are items that we will be looking at very carefully. So just looking forward, again, to human resources on the budget reductions, you can see that I provided a significant amount of information as what we've done over the last 10 or 11 years in your packet. It provides detail as to all the increases, as well as the decreases that have occurred. As you can imagine, the major area where all of our increases have been are in the human resource area, and that includes salary and benefits. So over this period of time, we averaged about a $4 million increase per year, and for program increases, which is those directly related to program items in the instructional area, special education area, our increases have been only $1.3 million. The thing to know is these are net numbers, so over time, there have been gives and takes. There have been, when we had some years where we had GEA reductions, we had to do reductions in many areas, and that would be reflected in these net numbers. The support area, again, also minimal increases of $1.6 million, and the major part of that is really related to our school bus transportation, which is contractual increases to the bus contractor we use. In the other area, essentially, it's been no change, so, and that represents our supplies. In recent years, we have been able to add some dollars back to those areas, but again, we really never recovered from where we were 11 years ago. So as we continue to look at our planning, we always have to be aware of the tax cap formula. We have really minimal opportunities to real, allocate our current budget dollars to offset some new increases, but we always do look at that, and that becomes part of it. And we always will know that the first thing that you will see on our budget development pages will be what our human resource expenses will be. So those items will be first in format, and secondly, we're going to then look at what new type of items we may want to put in, and then how the economic factors, as I mentioned, at the state level will affect our projected state aid. So in the next steps, I just want to go over the fact that the next meeting, I will be providing a long-range financial plan, and that plan will be in more detail about some of the forecast for the next five years. I will explain how that works through, as a planning item, it's not as meant to be a specific area within what we will be developing our 1819 budget, and I also will be reviewing the fund balance and reserve plan, again, that's a long-range plan.
Questions? Mrs. Van Seis?
Mr. Maturski, just wondering, I know that the TRS is projected to slightly increase from, I believe, 9.8% to 11%. Do you believe that this is such a minimal amount that it will be offset with the revenues that we'll be receiving additionally from the state?
I think it's too early to say at this point. We will be looking at what the increase will be in our budget, and I, right now, I guess I would say I'm not optimistic that we are going to get a significant amount of state aid revenues. Our major increase, if we receive them, will be in building aid. And so I do not think we're going to get general or foundation aid increases in the next fiscal year.
Other questions? Thank you. Mr. Maturski, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the corrective action plan for the 2017 audit as presented, please? Dr. McClary, second. Mrs. Beager, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Someone like to make a motion to authorize to loan general fund dollars to the capital fund for the payment of the Smart Bond Project expenses as presented, please? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second. Mrs. Beager, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. If you have any liaison or conference reports, please make sure that you pass them to Mrs. Seraphin. Please send your reports within two days of a meeting, if at all possible. Does anyone need any coverage for any upcoming meetings? No? Okay. Are there any legislative matters that anyone wants to discuss? Mr. Mecca?
On the heels of the budget presentation and the discussions in Congress about the new tax plan, we might be wise to contact our congressional representatives and express dissatisfaction with the new tax plan, as it has great potential to impact our funding through reductions to, maybe Mr. Maturski knows more than I do, reductions to the tax cap formula, I think, or the amount of money that is waived off of the property value. I'm not sure if you're so familiar with it, but anyway, my understanding is it's not favorable to school districts.
Mrs. Beager?
This week, I received an email from Erie County School Board Association, I'm not sure if you all saw it as well, urging exactly what you've said, and had some guidance of school board members, how we could advocate to make sure that decisions made aren't negatively impacting our funding. So if anyone didn't see that email, I'd be happy to forward that along, but that was just some information and guidance for school board members and how you can contact representatives to make sure we're looking out for our school district.
The biggest concern, I guess, in the area is Representative Collins and how he's going to vote. Supposedly, he's in favor of the new tax plan. I registered a call to his office and spoke to someone. I don't know how concerned they are about it, but the opposition to it, but you know, I did my part at least, and hopefully everyone else will call if they have the ability to.
Picking back on Mrs. Beager's comment there, that email was stressing that we do make phone calls to our representatives, not just letters, but actually put calls into them and voice our concerns with that. So I would encourage anybody, including the general public, to pick up a phone and make a call on behalf of public education. Any other matters? Yes?
Just to follow up on that, you know, I guess I'd have to familiarize myself more specifically, but taking your general point for granted and just accepting it as is, I would say that I would be in favor, so long as there's unanimity amongst the board, voicing that opposition in a more formal communication to our representative's office. I think us speaking as a whole, as a body that's affected by that legislation, has more impact than us individually commenting. So I think there's some coordination that needs to go into coming up with such a letter, but if that exists, I'm in favor of doing it.
Comments? Discussion? He'd be suggesting a resolution, I'm assuming?
I suppose so, yeah. We can formulate exactly what that letter should say, and then have it go out officially to all the representatives that represent this district and parts of this district. I think that'd be good. Is that, am I logically following the steps here? Okay, I'm just making sure that I'm making sense, because I think I do all the time, but I might not be.
Mrs. Meyer, beg to differ.
Oh, yeah.
Be happy to craft a letter for the board to consider to send to federal government officials in regards to the federal budget. I think that would be timely. If the board is in support of it conceptually, I would hope you could express that this evening. I don't know if we, it would be timely enough to be sort of reviewed and approved by the board at the next meeting, but I think it's certainly critical that our federal officials hear from us in terms of what's most important. For example, regarding the state and local tax deduction being removed, some of the changes in tax brackets, the potential loss of write-offs for states like New York State, the potential changes in reductions in Medicaid funding that would be not advantageous to our state, where that is the biggest chunk of New York State expenditures is on the Medicaid program. So if they lost federal Medicaid dollars, we're looking at other offsets in the budget season coming up, which would presumably include reductions in state aid for schools. So those are just some of the items, so if there's a general consensus amongst the board, I'd be happy to write something and send it to the board members for consideration.
Mrs. Beager?
It just so happens that I think many of us are gathering together this Saturday for the community forum, and if you're willing to put something like that together, given this is a timely issue, perhaps that's something we could even, prior to the start of the community forum, if there's enough of us in a quorum, that we could have a quick special meeting or something of that to approve that kind of action, so we could send out something as a board.
We can certainly do that. We would just have to make sure we follow the appropriate posting guidelines, of course, for, to publicize it as a meeting, and then those board members that are at the community forum, which I think is everyone, would be able to, almost everyone, that they could sign it. Yes, Mrs. Seraphin?
Who is attending?
I was just going to ask that, thank you. Can I have a show of hands of who will be at Saturday's community forums, please? One, two, three, four, five, six. So we have at least a quorum.
Well, if I can.
Yes.
Just to follow up, Scott, I think that's a great offer, and I would appreciate it if you could put something together. I think it would expedite things, so I'd appreciate it.
Is it the will of the board, then, that we have a special meeting come Saturday morning? I would probably suggest 8:45. Yes, okay. Well, we'll make that announcement and post that. We'll have a letter prepared prior to that. We'll send that out for the board's comment and approval, and we'll vote on it and adopt it on the Saturday morning prior to the community forums. Any other legislative matters? Any other legislative matters? Okay, thank you on that, by the way, Mr. Meyer. There are no curriculum matters to discuss this month, as well as there are no personnel matters to discuss this month. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to award bids for the Smart Schools Capital Project as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, second? Mrs. Beager, any discussion? Excuse me. Okay, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to award bids for the 2015 Facility Improvement Project as presented? Dr. McClary, thank you, second? Mrs. Beager, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the establishment of the district internal review board as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, second? Dr. McClary, thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Leatherboro?
Just had a quick question on this. I'm reading through, I read through it, and I realized what it's for. Is there an additional cost to this, associated with this? It looks like it's using, I'm understanding to be staff members to release possession.
Yeah, there is no, there's no cost to doing this. It's just, this AP Capstone program is a unique program. We started a couple of years ago in the district, and part of the project for seniors is to do a research project, and in doing so, you sometimes have impacts on human beings. They should be reviewed by the internal review board.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the Committee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education Membership as presented? Mrs. Beager, second? Mrs. Leatherboro, any discussion, please? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously. Thank you. Does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under committee of the whole? The board has received a letter via email from Daniel Yutowski, 113 Chasewood Lane, regarding the East Athletic Field Project. Are there any other correspondences to discuss? Okay. I'm moving right along here. All right. That brings us to another executive session. Would someone like to make a motion to meet an executive session to continue our discussion on employment matters relating to a particular person, collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, and current litigation? Beager, second? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to return to a regular board meeting to public session, please? Mrs. Van Seis, second? Mrs. Leatherboro, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Our next board meeting will be December 12th, 2017, with public session starting at 7:00 PM. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Mrs. Vasquez? Dr. McClay, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.